Home to the Griffins, Inuit and Vialt. They're indigenous people from throughout Canada. And other people from throughout Canada in the world, and it all makes Anuvik a great place to live. With that, we'll call meeting to order now that we have the. Sound off fix as everyone can hear. So we have councillor here and councillor. Merrill on the phone and we've got um. Four councillors in the room, so that's great. Item number two, adoption of the agenda. Any further? Move by. Councillor McDonald, second by councillor. Or Deputy Mayor. Barak. Any further additions? To the agenda? Uh, we will have a couple of addition additional information items uh which I'll bring up at at the information items that so. Weren't listed on Monday. Any, nothing, or then we have the addition that we added from Monday is uh. Wildlife manager Barak will uh be giving a presentation. We item number three, that creates a conflict of interest or peculiary interest with any of the agenda items, councillor Gillis.
Um, conflict in eight point five and eight point six.
Alright, we will have new step altering those. Discussion of both items. Delegations, presentations and petitions. Uh, for one. We've got the RCMP report and. But Sergeant Whynot here to give us the reading board. Thanks for coming back um. Sergeant Whynot was also here on Monday when we didn't have forum, so appreciate taking the time to come back and give us the RCMP report.
My pleasure, thanks for having us. So um, September was a fairly steady month uh there's some attachments. The most significant thing we had was the airport shooting. And in fact, a lot of people in town uh told, told the town to respond to that event. Um, even neighboring detachments were. Were in on it, uh very thankful for the town's help. Uh, public letting us know what was happening. Uh, abiding by the the shelter base order and thankfully that we resolved. As peacefully uh as it could have been. Uh, the suspect is in custody right now, so being held in remand. Victims are all doing very well, so thankful for that. Uh, we're also investigating the. Distribution of intimate images complete. Um. We're noticing that type of crime is probably among teens and young adults. Whether they're taking pictures, sharing them, and then it's. You should. Elsewhere without. All, all parties concerned. Uh, we've got some specialized units that help us develop investigations, so it it does take quite a bit of time to do that properly. Another search and rescue uh successful operation, um we'll get crew to work with here, Kessara and the ground search and rescue team. There's three additional arson investigations. Now, we do believe those are all tried. Tried to the local drug trade here in town. And also on the three complaints of people having bear meets on their own. Some interaction with police, so. Um, since you notice some weapons related calls for service are increasing. We do again believe that's hiding the local drug trading theater in town. Where the majority of our calls for service continue to be alcohol related. Um. So to combat that, the the drug trade here in town, we are taking actions on that with the surge warrants. Go upon at the local apartments. Uh, increasing foot patrols downtown, doing some uh liquor seizures, getting nine last month. Uh. We see members participate in a. Victim services led strangulation prevention training workshop, trying to make some contacts. Road safety needed a few more tech stops last month and a few more fair drivers. Our reconciliation activities included us attending the harvest festival. Terry Fox Run Suicide awareness uh events. And we also led a parade on Truth and Reconciliation Day. Give firearm safety talk at the school. And actually partnered with victim services to help uh a victim here actually leave the community with her family to. To escape some of the the drug. Uh, really activity going on in in the fan's life. We made six charges for failing to comply on some of the prolific offenders here in town. Uh, as many meetings said during the month, uh. Was able to meet with Mayor Clarkson to discuss. How the town are simply can partner better to. To help reduce the crime in in Anuvik. One thing that uh really well stuck out to me, I only I've only been here for two months, but. Uh, the prison count for the year. Like we're at five hundred and twenty-six for this year compared to eight hundred and seventy-six. At this time, uh last year, the first nine months of the year. Uh, I'm not sure why that there's a, you know, three hundred. Um, description, I can only imagine it's because. Members are using the shelters a little more and that. Making the decision, this person doesn't need to be held in jail, they just need somewhere safe to sober up. And I'm very thankful to have those shelters here offering that service. That's what we've been up to in in September. Happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you Sergeant Whynot. Questions, comments from council? Deputy Mayor Barak.
Great, thank you. Um, great to see the compliant for proper compliance check being done, that's definitely a good tool to use. Um, I guess I wanted to ask whether. There's still a record in the RCMP of people using the Crime Stoppers uh. Phone line. I know we pushed that in the past in the community and did a lot of big promotion posters and encouraging people to. Report activities they see and letting them know they can report anonymously because we all know a lot of people are scared to report. To get tied into an investigation and were testified uh just for fearing for their safety, so. Um, when we did a big push in the past with the Crime Stoppers, there was an uptick in people using that and it did help the RCMP respond to more. Issues particularly related to drug events and things like that, so. I guess I'd be curious to see if the community is still utilizing that resource effectively, or it's time to again do another push and. Let people know that that's a resource they have available. To deal with some of these things because there's obviously a lot of concern. From people, we hear a lot of it all over town and all over the whole region and all over the territory these days. So.
No, for sure, and uh yes, we still do get a fairly steady amount of Crime Stoppers tips. Um, so I'm pleased that there was a push and the public is aware of it because they are they're using.
Great, I just have one more quick question. So I see listed you guys got a new police vessel, I'm assuming that's just a old truck. But that's something different.
Please both.
It's a boat, okay, that's what I was assured.
So uh next year, we'll be able to do some some river patrols and collect that. Uh. Where maybe some impaired boating going out. Some of the different lakes in town, so. Hopefully get out there and make sure everybody's being safe.
Further questions, comments from council?
Hey, uh, quick one, yeah, I don't, I don't have a question on the airport incident there, um the timeframe from. When it happened to the time when alerts came out over the phones was very. Long, or can you understand, I don't know the process, I mean, I don't want to break the incident, but that seems very good. It's almost never ended by the time it came, I think, but it's not how I don't know my phone.
Oh, it's a, it's a good question that a lot of people have had, so I'm glad to discuss it here. Uh, so we. When there's an event that the public is in danger, we feel. Criminal activity. Uh, that we want the. Public to shelter, uh us to do our jobs safely and keep them from. Danger. We make a request to the territorial government. Um, once that threshold has been met. And then the the government goes through their processes in order to activate it, broadcast it. There's some translation that has to occur, it has to be vetted by uh different levels, so you're right, it isn't instantaneous. Um. In this particular instance, uh where we had. Two kind of separate events. Where there was the shooting at the airport. At that time, there wasn't any evidence that. There was a, an immediate danger to. Put in an isolated incident. When uh the person needs to be using a truck as a, as a weapon. That's when the threshold, the general public at large is in danger. That's when our decision was made that, you know, we need to have this alert in place. And that's when the government was alerted. And. The order was issued. Right, thank you.
It's a quick question, Sergeant Whynot, um as we move into the holiday season, the Christmas season. Um, I was just wondering what's being planned for, I guess, being visible and check stops and uh. Working with our protective services, um police officers.
Yeah, for sure, um foot patrols in the the downtown, you know, on North Mart and. And the core there, uh check stops. Car and pair driving are going to be taking place. Um. We're adding some questions about. Uh, the roads and the slipperiness, so curious, the town, like how often? Are those salted or sanded or sidewalks in front of businesses, are they responsible for for that or? Uh, I'm not sure, and.
Yeah, we'll let the our S A O answer all those important questions.
If it was snow clearing, we have um a certain measurement on the roads before we. Put the uh the plows out, if it is sanding, it is as required. So if we notice in the morning that it is sanding required, then that will be initiated. First thing in the morning, uh again, understanding that there are priority streets.
For sure.
North Mart Hill is one of them.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the sanding and clearing in front of businesses in the downtown core. That is the responsibility of the business owners. And the business owners are well aware of that. Uh, but we do have to send out a reminder every once in a while, so I can initiate the protective services to get. The reminders out to those businesses, so when you're looking from basically the Eagle Church, uh. A little farther down the Eagle Church. Through the downtown core area where most of the pedestrian traffic is, that is the responsibility of the businesses facing that sidewalk. And uh anything beyond that, like from, we'll say the pavilion down to the hospital. And from Reliance up Navy where the sidewalk is, that is our responsibility, yes.
Would that be a bylaw that we could help enforce?
Uh, usually a reminder to the business owners, uh does work, but. If that is something that you want to work with, I I can certainly have uh like a discussion with. Director Larmen uh about when, when we can get those letters out.
Oh, I just noticed, um, like any other. Community. People maybe haven't switched their tires over to proper ones, so there was a few more cars in the ditch. Bicycles tipping over and a few vendor vendors in the last week, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is. This shoulder time of the year.
Yeah.
Where. That generally does happen, but. I see the sanders out all the time.
Yes. Thank you for that. Yeah, certainly a combination of the temperature, like the freezing grizzle we have this morning, even though it was minus seven. And um and then not getting more snow, so hopefully with the snow we get tonight, that'll help. Help the streets uh not be so slippery, because right now it's. It's almost like a curling rink, it's like the streets pebble with with ice, so it's uh, yeah, it's very slippery. Any further comments, questions for Sergeant Whynot, while we've got him? Alright, thanks again, again, very comprehensive and informative report, we certainly. Appreciate all the work that the RCMP are doing in town. Yeah, great job, thanks.
You did a good job, I'll do.
Are we ready? Okay, we're just gonna shift up the. Agenda a bit while um. Uh, we get done against the uh. Once, once we get, once we get uh, we'll, we'll go back to the allegations and get the. Totally, yeah, bear report uh up and running. Item number five, public question period, any questions from the public? We're good on that one. Item number six, adoption of the minutes, minutes from the October sixth and eighth council meeting, moved by. Deputy Mayor Barak, second by councillor Day. Any corrections, additions needed on those minutes? All those in favor? Motion carried. Any updates on any of the action items?
Sorry, I just have to get to it.
Yeah. I don't think there is.
I left somebody my glasses, so. No, that's okay, uh other than the um. Community, just uh so council is aware, the next set of meetings, so November tenth, we will be doing our community plan and zoning bylaw. For the third reading, so we will, that, sorry, for the second reading, so we will definitely need um. Yourselves there for corn for that, uh there was a discussion with the mayor. The tenth is between a weekend and a staff holiday. So. Are we going to have the committee of the whole on that Monday?
Okay. Yes, question is, is there anybody who's not going to be here Monday the tenth? Okay, councillor Donald, you won't be here. Jen or I'll let, or councillor Barrett, councillor Merrill. Do you know if you're away or not able to attend on the tenth of November?
I'll be attending.
I'll be attending.
You can go continue, plus. Mario. Councillor Review, councillor Wayman may also be attending, but we. Based on what we've heard tonight, we do have forum, so we will. Plan on uh committee level on Monday.
And then. Uh, the twelve, the regular council.
Yes, okay.
Other than that, then that's all the action items.
Okay. We do law on paper? Minutes? Yeah, oh, we did, okay, good. On the chair, we're still in the discussion point. Uh. Under new business eight one. Uh, I guess we'll get this on the floor and then we can have a discussion, moved by. Deputy Mayor Barak, second by councillor McDonald. If this is an M O U between us and the city of Yellowknife, which basically says we will share information. Both communities are identified as Northern Operational Support Hub. Of course. We believe in Anuvik is more strategic because there are a lot of culture to the uh. Motion, but there's also a role that the Yellowknife, a role that the Dallas will be playing. And uh. This is just to uh enhance any communications uh between. Uh, the two communities on. Um, discussions they're having with D N B um or or other groups we related to the Northern Operational Support Hub. So that's what that's about. Any further questions, comments on that? Uh, they're also taking it to their council uh. Before the end of the month, and then if both are approved. Then we'll have a signing ceremony when I'm in Yellowknife on the fifth and sixth of November. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion carried. Eight two, request for council decision, donation request under record minor hockey. Let's get this on the table and then we can have a discussion on this. Moved by councillor Gillis, second by councillor Day. Questions, comments, we do have a representative from the minor hockey gear. There are any specific questions on the event? Mister Donald. Can likely answer them? Any questions, comments on the event?
Yeah, it's Alana, I have a question. So, can somebody just clarify for me the amount that the, this is going to cost, I think the. Minor Hockey hasn't been able to raise all the money they need, is that the issue?
Uh, no, that's not the issue at all, like I have got some money through the community. Um, you know, we do, like, so I think we're roughly twenty, between twenty-two and twenty-five hundred dollars. Is uh, is the request is the amount, uh, amount of ice time we'll have over the four and a half days. Um, I did get some money from the community, like we're trying to make the have, we only allocate so much money per team. Per travel per year, so I don't really want to go after the business community so much right now. When we will have four teams or four divisions trying to travel this year, so. I decided to wait for us to cut costs as well, because it is a thirty-one thousand dollar hockey school. That if we could uh have the ice time donated, I'll vote in Anuvik Minor Hockey a little bit as well.
Brad, how many? Uh, yeah, right now we have a hundred and thirty youth registered for Anuvik Minor Hockey, it's great.
Okay. Question, comments from council? Deputy Mayor Barak?
Yeah, I guess I um, I looked at this, I'll speak in favor of the motion, I think it's a pretty. Small amount for a pretty significant event, it's an event for a lot of people. Uh, and Newt Minor Hockey is putting up a bunch of cash themselves. Um, so we're basically putting in twenty-five percent of the value that in minor hockey is fronting themselves. Uh, in addition to the money that's coming from our tolling, so I think it's good value for a donation like this. For an event like we're planning to hold, so, you know, speak in favor of the motion.
Further comments, questions from council? And and it is a donation of any kind, we're not. Cash, putting out any, any cash, it's uh giving our facility, yeah. No further comments, questions, all those in favor of the motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Donald.
Item eight three. Is the support for the Inuit Nunagat University. This is um. Well, let's get it on the table and we'll have the discussion. Uh, moved by. Councillor Day, second by councillor McDonald. Okay, just the background on this, we were asked to provide a support letter to I R C. Which was um looking at applying for that, uh then um. After those letters went in, those letters of um interest went, went in. Uh, I believe it was I T K. Then said they would like the communities where the, either the camp, main campus or the satellite campuses. Would be located, to actually make the application to ensure that logistically it's, it's possible that the community could support. The, the full university or a satellite of it, so that's why it's come back to. To us uh to have this motion, I R C is still going to do the work on this, we're not taking up staff time to do it. But in order for a satellite. It would, which is what we're, we would be shooting for, we're not shooting for the main campus, that'll probably be in the Eastern Arctic. But we would be asking for a satellite campus to be located in Anuvik. Well, that, that's what the uh. And and that has to go to council and then, and then if that's approved, then that goes uh back to the uh. The consultants and and the people reviewing all of the applications and then they will. Then contact us and I R C and then uh. Work with everyone on the application and then um. That will be evaluated um in the future. They have received a lot of money in order to implement the um. Uh, Inuit, Nunagat universities throughout the Canadian Arctic, so. Once that decision is made, then um making it a reality is is certainly possible. Questions, comments? Councillor Merrill, councillor Barrett, any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yep, just seconding that as well, this is absolutely wonderful.
All those in favor?
Yes.
So continue to work with them and I R C. To uh move that forward.
Eight four, request for council decision, uh tender award twenty twenty-six as and when brush cutting. Moved by. Councillor Day, second by councillor Gillis. Any further questions, comments on this tender award? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Councillor Gillis is declaring conflict, she's just left the room for eight five and eight six. So if we can get eight five on the table. Moved by. Deputy Mayor Barak, second by councillor Day. Any further discussion on eight five, uh this is the uh award for the as and when electrical and controls. All those in favor?
Yes.
Carry, eight six, tender award for the as and when for plumbing and mechanical. Uh, moved by councillor Day, second by deputy mayor Barak. Any questions, comments on this award? All those in favor?
Yes.
Carry. Just letting councillor Gillis back in the room. Eight seven, award. Tender award for the road and ditch maintenance tender. Just get this on to the table, moved by. Councillor Day, second by councillor McDonald. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion carried. Eight eight. Award for the road and fuel supply tender. Oh, sorry. As and when road fuel supplied. Sorry, not and road fuel supply. Um, getting this on the floor, moved by deputy mayor Barak, second by councillor Day. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion carried. Eight nine, award for utilidor and piling repair tender. Moved by. Councillor McDonald, second by deputy mayor Barak. Discussion, comments? Questions? Deputy Mayor Barak.
Um, yeah, just a comment that um to acknowledge that I see the assessment the administration has done and and I agree with the. Recommendation they're providing from that assessment, so. Just put that out.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion carried. Nine one. Getting into the bylaws now. This is second and third reading, bylaw twenty-seven fifty-eight to amend the bylaw for vacant and derelict properties. Moved by. Deputy Mayor Barak, second by. Councillor McDonald. Questions, comments on this bylaw? Deputy Mayor Barak.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to note that the um. Highlighted changes that are in the summary are actually not exactly the same as what's in the document. So the ones that are in the document that's in here are the ones we're voting for, because those ones are the ones I agree with.
Okay.
They're a little bit different than what's in the summary.
Oh, good. Good catch on that, we'll make sure that that's, that's the changes we're making.
So the ones in the bylaw?
Yes.
Are the correct ones?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, any further questions, comments on those changes in the bylaw? All those in favor?
Yes.
Carry. Nine two, versus the need to do third reading. Oh, sorry, sorry. That's. Oh, that was, okay, that was the second reading, okay. Third reading.
Third reading, moved by. Counselor Day, second by Deputy Mayor Barak. Um, any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Yeah.
This will be the first and second reading for the bylaw. Twenty-seven fifty-nine amendment to the solid waste collection. We'll get this on the table and have a discussion, moved by. Counselor Gillis, second by Deputy Mayor Barak. Further discussion on this bylaw and the definition of within the mean of school boundaries?
Just to note that in the resolutions here, you got first and first. So just when we do second reading, just highlight that it's second reading.
So, sorry, this is.
In the recommendations for the resolutions.
Right.
Both of them say first reading. So just make sure.
So.
Just when you do the second one, be sure it's second reading.
Okay, yeah. Okay. So all those in favor of the first reading? Okay, now.
Yes.
Second reading, moved by. Counselor McDonald, second by Counselor Day. All those in favor? Motion carried. Now we come to the fun part of the meeting, all of the departmental updates. So, I guess we're not beginning with Protective Services?
No, that would have been done on Monday. Um, however, uh, training. Wednesday night, fire training. So, yeah. It will be done next, at the next set meeting.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, ten two, economic development and tourism, Charlotte?
I can do it quickly with that. If it doesn't work, so. Alright, I don't know. Yeah, I've been responding, it's not missing. Sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so I just came back from the Economic Development uh. D K D Conference, the Economic Development Association of Canada, uh, two weeks ago. Very informative sessions. I got to meet a lot of the professionals uh, across all Canada. Uh, we're only two from uh, the north. Two from Anubik. Uh, I was with uh, Ivan Gavara from ITI. And uh, it was, yeah, it was very, very interesting. Uh, the session that was very, oh, baby, go. Thank you so much. Uh. Yeah, perfect. A session that was uh, insightful was how to generate startups and uh. Innovation is businesses without any big city budget. So that was very, very good for me and for my. Um. We also are right now in during uh, the Small Business Week. Uh, it started October nineteen and it's ending on the twenty-fifth. Uh, we had three, we have three events going on right now. Uh, the first one was the Arctic Markets that was on October fourth. It was very popular because we had it for free for vendors. So we had plenty vendors, uh, lots of people coming as well. So it was really, really good. Uh, we are hosting tomorrow in partnership with ITI, uh, the Northern Most Host Workshop. And right now for the whole week, we have a nominate your local business. Uh, then you can scan the QR code if you haven't done it yet and you can nominate the business right now. Uh, the first prize for the business that gets the most votes. Will get a full page ad in the guide, which is valued around two thousand dollars. A twenty-twenty-six free business license. As well as a thousand dollars uh, towards promotional materials. Uh, the second prize could be a free business license as well as five hundred dollars for promotional materials and the last, the third prize would be. A free twenty-twenty-six business license. Um, and then if you give a click. Two times. Three times actually, one, two, three, yep. Uh, and we just started the campaign for the sunrise festival happening January ninth to the eleventh twenty-twenty-six. We have the sponsorship package. And already contacted some uh, partners uh, that agreed to uh, work with us and host some workshops as well as some activities. Uh, the QR code is also uh. Going to the sponsorship package to sign up if you want to. Um, the next one is. The Inubit Guide is still running. We. Still going good, but we're struggling as there is another business that started. Uh, contacting businesses in town to run their own, sell ads and run their own Inubit Guide. So it's very confusing for businesses and local people here. Um. So yeah, just a reminder for people. I just put it out today again, a reminder for people that are the town official in the big guide. Uh, but again, very confusing for everyone. Um. We also have the Kristen McLeod Memorial Community Room, uh, that is having had some bookings. We had a researcher from the University of Victoria, uh. Uh, having some interviews for his, for his research two weeks ago. And tomorrow and Friday, we're using that room as well for the uh, training. So again, a reminder that this room is available for free for anyone who needs it. It can host like seven people. But it's a great free little room to have. And I just finished my report and reapplied uh, for the building communities through Arts and Heritage. Uh, federal funding for the federal festival and I'm still waiting on an answer for the sunrise festival as well. If you can go back. I know, I don't know why. I think it's a timer. I don't, it's fine. If you can just go back. And finally, the marketing position, uh, we're still uh, trying to fill that position. Uh, and I'm hoping by mid-November I'll have someone, but yeah. And um, in a big guy, this is the QR code also. If you haven't uh, got your business signed up. Around the table, please do. Thank you so much. That's it.
Great, thanks Charlotte. Questions, comments for Charlotte on any of her presentation? Deputy Mayor Barak?
All right, this eating business for Inubit Guide, is it a local business or is it something from outside the territory, the community?
Primarily.
Okay, then. There's like a publishing.
Come here magazine.
Correct.
Oh, up here. Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure, oh, sorry. The upstair magazine is putting out their own outfit or are they just looking for?
They are doing the Inubit Guide.
Oh, they are.
The incredible Inubit Guide.
Please don't steal any jewelry, I think.
They're. They have a slightly different focus in that they were going to do. Uh, stories from elders and and different people from the community or the region. However, then they go after businesses for advertising in order to pay for it. So. It's it's different than our, our Inubit Guide that we've been producing for twenty-five years. But they're also going after the same market and they're putting in um. Uh, maps with all the businesses on similar to what we we've done in the Inubit Guide. So there is a. A fair amount of overlap despite the fact that they kind of assured us there wouldn't be, but there is. Yeah, so. We'll see how it goes for both of us this year and then we'll have a better idea of of what we forward. Yeah. Any other further questions, comments? Oh, great, thanks Charlotte. Ten three, Daniel from Infrastructure.
I'm sorry, it's frozen.
It's a little wind. One state just.
Alright, well. Anyway, uh, I have a presentation here, so I guess I'll just roll through it, but you'll be able to see. Oh, it looks like it's coming up.
Oh.
Um, so yeah, um, I just did a quick summary of, you know, to the last uh, month or so here. So I started off with the. Facilities group, um, there's been a renovation of the Colling. Colling Club Lounge, uh, changed the flooring, moved the door from the center of the room to one end of the room. Uh, the ceiling tiles as well has been replaced. It's still been replaced. It's almost done. Um. And there's a couple other items that need to be done in terms of uh, the sprinkle head and stuff like that. But yes, there's been a majority retrofit. Of the Colling Club Lounge. And if you haven't been there, you can stop by to see what the new look. What it looks like. I had a picture, but I guess probably didn't say that's name. Um, they also did a couple of retrofits with the changing room in the hockey rink side of the of the N S C. Uh, the bathrooms, uh, they changed the, a couple of the. The sink and vanity and stuff like that, just to make it look better, um. For the community and the user groups. Uh, we did approve, they've been quite busy the last. Two, three weeks, uh, with a lot of backup calls, uh, and mostly due to the heaving and all of that with the piles, with the wooden piles. Uh, so we've had about four calls in the last weekend and a half with all, a lot of silver backup, um, calls. Uh, we've had to deal with, uh, yes, they've worked on those and so far so good. It's been, it's been going smooth. Community engagement endeavors, um, so we're currently working with the Arctic Energy Alliance. For the winterization walkthrough project, um, that commenced last week. They had about forty residents sign up for that, um. And the team, they are handing out goodie bags with a couple of um, items, the no wrap. Spray foam, um, silicone, stuff like that to help people have their homes weather tight. So they go into those homes, the people that signed up, have a chat with them. They go in with the turmoil gone, um, show them how to use some of these items they have in the goodie bag and uh. And yeah, walk them through how to make their property weather tight for this season, since we're going into the winter. So we have forty participants and it was actually a waitlist as well. So. Um, they started last week, Wednesday, um, and they were supposed to end today. But I haven't had a chance to speak to them yet. Uh, in terms of the capital projects, we had a new truck arrived in town, uh, the budget for that was about a hundred thousand dollars, but it cost us. Eventually cost us about ninety-seven to buy, purchase it and bring it up. Um. Well, I have photos of the fast truck too, but. It's a, it's a Ford twenty-two and six Ford Super Duty F five thirty. Uh, the community wildlife plan before treatment, so we had that awarded. Last, well, we went to tender, it came in way below what needed to come to council. So we had that awarded last week. And they have also commenced work on the by, bomb pass area of um. Uh, area of that project. I had a couple of photos of that as well. Um, and especially, this is especially moving forward because of the. Electric fence we have going up so that next season, well, there's the fire element to this, but obviously we also have the. The bear awareness element in it as well. So we're going to clear all those areas so we can. Have a little more space between the road and the and forest in that area. Uh. Next, the solid waste site electric fence. Work has resumed back up there. So we, we paused work, uh, work stopped at some point, um. To allow for the bears to go back into activation, uh, for we close the fence off. So the contractors should be coming back up. The end of this month, uh, but the site work has commenced to to raise the burn and have um, the bottom part of the fence buried. Um, and they should also resume installation of the. Of the gravel pad or the c can that holds the electric uh, panels and stuff like that. The solar panels and electric unit anyways to electrify the fence. The town playground refurbishment project, we had a budget of about a hundred and fifty for this, which. We haven't spent a real penny, but okay, um. And the, so with this, you'd have approved that we do the assessment. Of all the programs, uh, before we proceed with any kind of constructions. And I guess the key takeaway from the assessment was most of the playgrounds are in bad, to good conditions. Um, some do need major attention. Uh, none of our playground is fully accessible in terms of accessibility needs. Um, we don't, we're missing safety signage at all the sites, uh, surfacing. Is very compacted, um, and and some places unsafe, uh, needs renewal or impact protection. Drainage problems in all the sites, uh, and we need to do a better job with uh, maintenance and special logs. So with that in mind, we did. Uh, we did complete the design for the Cogmalit Park, uh, with plans to go to tender and see. What that comes in in terms of cost and so we can plan for next year's budget if council decides to move in that direction. But the inspection was completed and in terms of priority actions, improve accessibility, signage, surface drainage. And in implement a regular maintenance program. Tenders, we have three tenders out there currently. We have one for the Cogmalit Playground Innovation Project. We have one for the foil treatment services for boundaries B, C, and D. And we have, um, the tender for the construction phase of the Inubit Lagode Improvement Project. I think that concludes my presentation, but I guess, um, I just have a question last. Time around from Counselor Barrett about the, the decision about the washroom and concession, um. The committee has decided to go back to RFP to the engineers, um. To proceed with a stick build washroom. So we're not going to be proceeding with the concrete. Building we have planned because obviously the cost and all of that. So we're going to go back to the engineers, which, which, we've, I have sent out a couple emails to a couple consulting firms. For RFP, trying to. Get an engineer on board, um, and understand that the plan is to have. Stick build washroom, which is probably, and hopefully coming way less in terms of cost and then, um. And then the other one I approached up tonight is the feasibility study. So we had our feasibility study set out for. The. Well, public transit feasibility study. The whole idea behind that is to attempt to apply for the rural transit on the, um.
Were you on profit?
One of the requirements was either we have visibility study done or we have experience running transit system. As a municipality, we don't have that currently. We don't have any transit system running. Um, and I was unsuccessful in trying to partner with one of the first organizations in town that are running, currently running some sort of transit. Um, so we are going and we have, we are doing the feasibility studies to put ourselves in poor positions to apply for that. Other committees that have applied for it, uh, for instance, Dusty and White House had a joint application. And they were successful. They got three point three million dollars to build two garages and they got a disability van out of the funding. So. I'm hoping to model our application after that to be able to potentially get us, um. A one warehouse and um, which would be a facility to store whatever it is we end up going for. So we closed the feasibility study. On Friday and the results were collected and we're just working with the consultants to pull that together to complete the feasibility study. Once that's done. And the application portal is open, we'll put in an application for color funded. You can apply for up to ten million dollars.
Thanks, Daniel. Questions, comments from council? Deputy Mayor Barak?
Uh, the feasibility study you were just talking about, I'm assuming that also includes the survey that the town put out to residents?
Yes, that's the, that's what that's about.
How was the uh, level of participation in that survey?
We had, uh.
We lost connection and.
Oh, we may have lost connection, I can see council parents hands up, but we might have lost connection with her.
Yeah, she can't hear us.
Okay.
I'm still on.
Okay.
Oh, back again, yep.
Question on Daniel's report or was your hand up earlier? Okay. Thank you, Daniel. And for Inubic Works, Patricia.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Oh, there we go, we've got the.
I'm excited because I actually have pictures for the first time. So. For Inubic Works, as of October fifteenth, we diverted thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty six pounds from the landfill. In September alone, we diverted two thousand one hundred and forty nine pounds. And October to date of my report, reports writing, which was the fifteenth, that was one thousand nine hundred and thirty four pounds. And in September, our total store sales were seven thousand three hundred and seven, that's a little bit lower. Than some of the previous months, but it seems like October has jumped up quite a bit higher. From our first weeks of sales. We had the International Day of the Girls celebration and during the day event. For the afternoon, we had only twenty participants and mostly adults that attended. But in the evening, we had fifty six girls from the age of eleven to nineteen. Who attended the evening and many of them spent the whole time, like they didn't just come and go. They spent the whole time shopping, visiting, snacking. And now we have a whole new bunch of thrifters because many of them have been in the store multiple times since then. Looking for things, so, so they got to celebrate and they learned about. Reusing and re-buying items, so that was really exciting. October fourth, we attended the Arctic Market highlighting the Mentibility Program. And the National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month. And I don't know if any of you have seen Alfred Kennedy in our store, if you've ever popped in. He is a incredible salesperson. And when he's there, I don't think anybody uses the store without something in hand. He's always bringing bargains to them and, and awareness of things that are going on. And he shone at the table at the Arctic Market, he was talking up everybody. You know, joking around with them and just creating an incredible experience for people who visited the table. So some of the things that we've accomplished since the last time I, I came to report was. We did the light up for Dean, Town Hall, the Centennial Library. And the inside M S C and Inubic Works. And so all of them have some lights and one of the things that I'm going to explore for next year is brighter lights. Because they're hard to see and we ordered purple lights and they look purple, but when you plug them in, they're pinkish red shining. And so it wasn't quite the effect we had hoped for, but we are participating on that level. We had two crew members that passed their firearms course. And so that will lead to bear monitor positions and other kinds of positions like that and they were really excited. So we had Joyce and Stanley that passed that course. And we had three crew members that registered in the driver training. And they haven't taken the exams yet, just because there's a process, there were so many of them. I think they did three courses back to back to back. And so, and the courses were really full and so they have to be scheduled in to take their exam. So we're waiting to see how we do on that, but they were really excited to be able to get, to get that. We're doing a draw for a shopping spree that we're going to do on Halloween. And so somebody will win a shopping spree within the store. And we're looking at ways to increase sales and jobs for the crew, there have been some lulls in the jobs for the crew. And I think it's more weather. It's driven by the weather, it's the in-between season, there's not a lot to do outside. When it's that in-between season, but it is starting to pick up this week a little bit. They're shoveling some snow for some of the elders and some of the nonprofit organizations have them down to do some larger jobs as well. And we also have plans for a literacy project, our food safe and nutrition meal planning is still happening, probably in December. And that's some of the highlights and upcoming events, any questions for me?
Great, thanks Patricia, great report, great, great activity there and the project is running really well. Questions, comments from the council? Everyone's happy? Great, thanks Patricia. Next, we have Trace from Parks and Rec. Guys, if we have any questions, just a minute.
It's, it's done.
So I usually start off with our K P I's for the month and without having my slides in front of me. I do remember that as far as the gym memberships go, they are down a little bit this month. Those stats are from September, so contributing that to everybody getting in at the end of August and getting their gym memberships as well. Thank you very much. As well as some of the positions that come and go throughout town, don't renew their gym memberships, obviously when they leave. So we had twelve daily memberships, six weekly, fifty nine monthly. Eleven three-month memberships, which are becoming a little more popular. We try to steer people to those if they are constantly purchasing the month membership but are actively staying in town. Two councilor parents questioned or point at the last departmental update. I separated out the one year and the corporate annual membership, so this last month we did sell one annual, we didn't sell any corporates. They come up every once in a while, so. Moving over to the aquatics department, our new aquatic supervisor is settling well, he's doing a great job. Jake Queens and Jake Jellemar are working diligently to get some courses out. Get some bronze cross and some bronze medallion going so that we can bring back our noon hour swim and kind of bolster some of our programming. We've also got some Swim to Survive funding coming in that we spoke with one of the directors of the N W T R P A. And so that's going to allow us to partner with the school and provide some swim lessons, which is always something we're getting a lot of requests for. So it's going to be nice to be able to get that going in the new year. The library visits as well from last month are down a little bit. That's mostly attributed to obviously the tourist season falling off a little bit. The one point I'd like to note on that is I think oftentimes we think of the library as, you know, a great spot for kids and teens. But you notice there the adult portion is quite high as well, over a thousand people. And so Renee and her team at the library are looking at adding some adult type programming. Not only book related, but also a resume and a tech literacy course to help some of the community members. Become more familiar with those things and resume tweaking, so we're really looking forward to offering that in the new year. As well as starting to add a few elders programs like book bingo and things like that, so we're really excited about that. That's going to be a neat one, that's going to really encourage people to read and bring that to the community. If it goes to the next perfect. Looking back at kind of the month of September and a little bit into October. Before any of that, we had our annual truth and reconciliation day in the community hall, that was a fantastic event. The kids carnival was great, it was a really, really fun day, so we really enjoyed having that and getting to have our little part in that as well. The arena ice installation has been completed, so lots of public skating going on. I believe most of the hockey leagues have started up and so far everybody seems happy with that. To Director Komu's point, his team did some work on the change rooms there and we installed some new faucets, which the older. Or the adult, excuse me, hockey groups had requested just to make their water bottles filling easier. So we've got some really good feedback on that and then of course it's made the dressing rooms look a lot better as well. Food camp class has started back up as of September on Tuesday, Thursday. That's kind of one of our flagship programs, we really enjoy having that. We average about eight people right now, which you know is kind of the, the small and mighty crew. We're looking to do some things towards the end of this year and into the new year. We're going to run our bring a friend promotion again where somebody who pays for a bootcamp admission can bring a friend for free to try it. See if they like it, no pressure and then hopefully convert them into a long time user of the account. So the N W T R P A conference was fantastic, it was great to get to showcase our whole community as well as the facility. There was thirty nine delegates from all over the territories. It was down a little bit from the expected amount, but I think it made for a little bit more of a networking opportunity. There's a chance to sit down with each individual person and really, you know, kind of talk about how their communities work in the ins and outs. And so I for one gained some really valuable insights from that and. We got to showcase our curling club, I got to run a learn to curl session, I'm by no means the curling expert, but Nick was gracious enough to let me do that. And it seemed like it was a hit of the conference, so that was kind of fun as well. Moving to our elders program, elders range of motion and elder swim, I just really like talking about these ones, they're great programs for the community. Amanda Pokiak does a great job with the elders range of motion and a ton of those participants come to the elders swim as well. So again, it's nice to have a couple of different options during the week for the elders. Big news on the pool front, the hot tub is up and running and holding steady to this point. So we did kind of a, a soft opening a couple of weekends ago and just wanted to make sure that everything was gonna. You know, stay before we, we announce that and it looks like everything is holding steady, so we're happy to have that back online. As another amenity within the facility, just to offer to the community members, I know there's lots of people that enjoy that. So I kind of spoke to this a little bit with the library, but they've started up their book club, both teens and adults. And so it's really good to have those going with the hope is that the teens enjoy the book club so much that they will continue on to it into adulthood. Another program that they partnered with outside community groups is they had the A R I STEM visits. There was twenty some participants at each of those sessions, they, they really enjoyed the activities. A R I did a great job facilitating those, so it was a great partnership and you know, great to showcase the library and some STEM type things. Looking forward, we are the venue for the N W T Tourism Conference coming up, so we're hoping that will be as much of a success as the Recreation Conference. And hopefully to see some more delegates with that as well. You folks heard about the I M H A hockey camp, I want to thank council for approving that donation, I'm really looking forward to having that event. I think Brent and I M H A are going to do a great job with that, I know they're bringing in some motivational speakers to talk with the kids. And there's lots of, you know, off ice events as well, so I think it's just going to be a great mix of things for when the kids are off school. And thank you for your help in facilitating that. So also we have the, the Bolt or Delta Trade Show coming up, which also has a public portion where people can come and check things out. And again, we're really looking forward to being able to host that. Myself and our H R manager, as well as potentially some other staff, will be attending the E C E Career Fair, November fifth. To showcase some of the opportunities available via town of Inubic, answer any of the questions that community members may have. You know, relating to working to the town or what that might be like. And so we're really looking forward to just being able to pump what a great place this is to work for and, and you know, hopefully fill some of those positions. So another event that's coming back in November is our Table Tennis for All. And so Thor from Sport North coordinates that and so he comes in and he teaches the kids ping pong, kids and adults, I believe, Ping pong for All. Teaches everybody ping pong and throughout the week and then they do a little tournament at the end. And last year it was a really well attended event and so we're really looking forward to be able to showcase that again. And that is all I have for today, is council asking questions.
Great, thanks Trace, you've given Brian a run for his money on the speed talking, good, great job. Good, lots of activities all over, which is great for the community, so we certainly appreciate all of that. Questions, comments from council? Everyone's happy with all the activity? You guys are good? If, okay, thanks Trace. Last but not least, Corporate Services, Stephen, I think Stephen had a handout that he also put at this. At everyone's desk, so you're going to have to see the numbers. You guys get that out? Oh, okay.
Thank you, good evening everyone, this is the Corporate Services update for October. The Conservative Update for Capta Projects, that's on October seventeenth. And I worry, you have with you the. The report, the long one. So that kind of the highlight of that report. As of prior October seventeenth, out of the, out of the budget of. Fourteen point zero five million, five point four million has spent. An increase of one point three million from the last report. Further breakdown is out of forty five out of four projects, fifteen have been completed. Three have been postponed to the, to twenty twenty six. And six, and six of them have no expenses recorded so far. And then there are other detailed comments. Just for you to review. Any questions? Then I will ask next. And operating expenses variance report, so it's about October seventeenth. If this is the smaller, the smaller one. And as the highlight, we have there, total revenue one point six million, deficit total expenses two million, sub bus. For lands, we have seven, seven thousand sub bus, utilities we have five thousand, five hundred and ten thousand sub bus. Leading to a net operating sub bus of well, nine hundred and forty six thousand. And the major reasons, overall, we have spent less than budgeted. And this is over and above the negative variance in revenue, we have received less than budgeted as well, but when you look at the net effect. It's an operating sub bus of nine point six. There are more notes, we have often twelve notes there, traverse plane, the sub bus and the deficit. Thanks, man. Qualitative updates, what we accomplished. The much awaited Community Public Infrastructure Fund has been received. But at first week of this, of this month, so that's. That's after make, after meeting all the demands of market. And I'm looking forward to the SISBIAC one, the. And I'm looking forward to uh the sister beer um on the crucially comes in November. Final property tax bill has been sent out as well. The sixty day. Collection period, after which um start having penalties for those who have not paid. What's coming up? New account install web talks to be finalized. Paper work to enable drawdown on our capital project loan. Been finalized by C I B C. And then the Q what the Q three C P I castance uh report. It's also been uh worked on. Think that should be all I have.
Thank you, Stephen. Questions, comments from council? Stephen, I have a question. Why do we have a deficit on the revenue side of? Of our uh budget on, I guess it's on administration? We had a two million dollar deficit?
Yeah, it's mainly um please see item number one. It's mainly due to. Uh the notes from about it.
So what one point seven I see is because we haven't got the grant in lieu from the governments?
We haven't re- yeah, we haven't received that yet.
Okay. And when do we have, when do we normally receive that?
Uh we have sent out an email to them. And um so what my car does to. Is to now facilitate uh getting, getting their own beach and all of that. So we, we, we. We send out, we've done what we need to do, but sometimes we have to follow to get. Okay, I see. Go until next year, January.
And now that we've got our own tax notices out, is that revenue coming in fairly steady?
What what we have discovered, uh some have been coming in, but is this tendency for them to wait since they have ninety sixty day window? There's this tendency for them to wait to maybe first, just toward the end of the period. It's like you have facility and they say pay in sixty days. So you just wait until maybe. Until maybe it's uh it's almost, it's uh it's almost over. So probably getting some trickle, but not as, not not up to twenty five percent as count.
Further questions, comments from council? On the capital or the operating budget?
Malcolm McDonald? Yeah, I see a question for both you and Daniel, but on the. Little uh replacement, looks like we only spend about half what our period budget is. And coming into winter season, are they, like, are we continuing to work? Do we have to net this all and then right here, or is it that we haven't got any invoice? But I assume, but I, I, that's a lot of money that I have to show. Really awesome. I I had asked about it and uh the the answer that just, we worked it out, we just haven't got invoiced. So it's.
Yeah, just reading some of the the notes on some of the other uh deficits or surpluses. Any further questions for Stephen? On either of the budgets, capital or operating? Seeing none? Thank you, Stephen. Moving down to number eleven information items. The first one I have is uh Bell cell service. Some of you may have noticed the, your phone's dropping, not getting calls and then seeing something on the phone later. So that arrived, sometimes half a day later. So there is a problem for sure. Uh I don't know how long they've known about the problem. The problem started in late August. So we are into late October. However, they have ordered whatever parts they need. And the crew is supposed to be here on Monday to install the parts. So we should. And they were saying it only affects a couple of zones, but it seems like it affects everywhere. Weaker signals and not getting calls in places where only you would get calls. So. That is, is en route to being fixed.
Actually, if I could turn that, I've had a some issues with the. Fire alarm dialing because it is on so uh so you have a service and I don't know if um. Service isn't known, but I don't know if they're. I haven't been able to reach in a couple of systems because of the bell um issues. So it's a, it's a little bit bigger issue than it's just our job calls.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, so these are batteries servicing which side?
These are, these are fire alarm communicators. So fire alarm was off, it it calls, or well, the ball with the. Article army yellow knife, but it's all based on a cellular because Northwest Tel system changed and couldn't. They they couldn't use the phone lines anymore. So all of our communication for fire, like fire communication is based on cellular.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's.
Sorry, I have to interrupt. I know when we switched over from our DAP system. The reason why we had to go with the cell service was there was supposed to be a redundancy.
Yeah, the redundancy is another cell. So the uh the. The regulations state that S B Q communication, and it used to be two phone lines, one dedicated one backup. That we had probably Northwest Tel. So they said, okay, we can use cellular and network. But most buildings don't have like that dedicated network that they can use. So they use a cellular network to as a workaround. And um, yeah, this is, and I mean, I don't know how article I'm gonna do, but it's all U L C based. But I do know that right now there's communication issues with the pilots. So yeah. And we have a pressure, and just on you, on your guys and on Bell.
Everybody still there?
We're still here.
Okay, thanks.
One major change that was not in the works before. Uh and it will be the base for uh the fuel plane for aircraft. This is the large aircraft that are used for fueling uh F eighteen s, F thirty fives in the air. And and the other larger planes, that plane and the those crew will actually be located here in Anubik full time. And that wasn't anything that was ever on the horizon before. And so that means there will be a number of personnel. Um in Anubik um twenty four seven. And um the other facilities. Um two, possibly three hangars, additional warehouses, additional storage. Um yeah, it's a, it's a huge, huge construction, um which for us as a tax based community. Um is a huge tax uh payment also because all of those um. Buildings, facilities, not the equipment, um go on to our tax rule. And the federal government pays a grant in lieu of taxes. Um so that would will be. Um very useful for the community. So we'll circulate the um the presentations. Um and then they've also committed to giving us regular updates as well as they will be reaching out to everybody on procurement. And opportunities that will be coming in the future. So we will see a lot more of um E and B in town. There were ten of them in the delegation, including the assistant deputy minister for infrastructure. And so um. It was a, a good and a big show. A lot of people with their first time to Anubik. Um so they're getting very serious about it in Ottawa and lots of project managers that are specifically working on Anubik. As well as the northern operational support hub people were also, which are another separate group. Within the group that was here, there's about four different subgroups, but all working on what they're calling the. Nor- NORAD modernization in the northern operational support hub. So. There were also some potential um projects um or funding for projects that we're doing. And so we're gonna continue to work closely with them uh on that. And uh they're quite open to funding some of those projects. And getting them funded, funded as soon as possible. So very positive meeting. And again, the most detailed information we've seen to date. Uh other information items associated with that, I will be going to Yellowknife to attend and participate in the. E and B shared, potential shared infrastructure workshop on November fifth and six. And then we'll also meet with the city of Yellowknife and do the signing on the M O U also at that time. Any other information items from anyone else? Oh, conster Barrett?
No, that's just the mouse. Oh.
The, the lock cell presentation.
Oh, yes. Are we, are we good to go? One of the drivers now for about three years now. Now, if there's any other information items after that, we can certainly uh this brings those onto the table.
It's, it's not the one with the video?
Oh, okay. Um so yeah, I guess there's. We have been doing some work around the landfill based on the installation of the fence and kind of monitoring uh wildlife. In response to the damage. So. Just to provide a little bit of context from folks about this. So the the town of Anubik last renewed its water license in twenty seventeen. And part of the conditions of that water license were had to develop a fencing plan. That described how the licensee will install and maintain fencing at the solid reach of the school facility. And is capable of capturing, capturing windsurf waste, deterred wildlife and preventing unoperas persons from entering the site. So based on that, there was a fencing plan that was worked on and submitted by the town and was accepted by the Witchin Land Water Board in twenty nineteen. That's when the town pursued some federal funding through a big community infrastructure program they were running there. Secured at least six hundred thousand dollars from the Fed at that time. And again, at that time, the town itself committed another two hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, to build this fence. So in anticipation of this stuff coming down the pipe, wrapped in twenty seventeen, when the first product I worked on in over the government is we. Just wanted to get an idea of what we're dealing with in the landfill with respect to bears. Everyone knew there was bears there, but I would say no one really had a good idea. How many were actually there and what they were doing. Um so we decided to throw some hair snag tripod. Which are just some boards with barbed wire wrapped around them. And we threw them in the garbage pile and there were a couple of spots where we had bear trails. And we got a bunch of hair out of that. And despite forty five percent of the samples failing to actually be sequenced. We still managed to identify twenty different bears genetically at that time. But again, we had a pretty high failure rate normally. It's around ten percent and we're at forty five percent. So we suspected and the officers believed there were a lot more bears actually accessing the site. Uh besides from what we actually identified. So we go to the next slide. So just again, a quick overview of that twenty seventeen hair snag. We ran it for five weeks at a hundred and thirty four hair samples in that high failure rate. We got the fifty, twenty bears, fifteen males, five females. We also had the officers go out a couple of times and take some drone videos. Once at midnight and they went on another plan at five A M and managed to see a whole bunch of different bears in there. The earlier time around midnight looked like a lot of sub adult younger bears. And as soon as they'd heard the drone, they all started to run away and scatter. But when they went out at five A M, there was a lot more larger adult bears who couldn't really be bothered to move very much. So even though the drone had been pretty close to some of them, um just to see what how they would react. A lot of times they would just walk over five steps because they were annoyed by the noise from most likely and just decided to sit down and keep munching on stuff. So there's definitely is some uh social societal structure of the bears in there where we believe the. Smaller bears are probably accessing the site early uh when they first start coming in in the evenings and. Kind of come in and come out later. Um so we did develop a manuscript report about this hair snag, but I thought anyone interested in reading one of them. So the fence installation. So again, the uh we decided to put some trail cams up to kind of start recording. Uh again, incidences of bears accessing landfill, seeing what we could see. Um we've set those down in May before the bears were gonna start coming in. So we capture them as the season beginning for bear activity. Uh we also did. Some barbed wire hair snags along game trails that were developing. So a lot of the protected areas where there was all these trails coming, where the bears were walking in and out. Uh we just decided to put some barbed wire strung across a couple of trees, a couple of feet off the ground. It seemed like it's snacks in here. We weren't sure exactly if that would work because it's such an open site to access from essentially anywhere. And the bears could probably easily walk around the barbed wire if they wanted to. So we had initially fourteen cameras. Uh I think it actually ended up being upwards of eighteen or nineteen. We put up twenty five barbed wire stations around the landfill. They had a number of landfill visits by the staff because they have to go over and we can collect those hairs. Before the DNA starts to degrade. So this is again an older presentation because as of last week, we had actually surpassed two thousand bear detentions. On our cameras. And we haven't even fully processed all the images uh that we've got so far. I think we're only up to. Late August or something. So the cameras are still out there. So we were getting a lot of interesting things. We had, I think there was one picture we found where you could see thirteen bears visible in the frame in the picture. Um and we have got other wildlife such as wolves being detected and and stuff like that. And in there it says we have three hundred and forty five hair sample, but we're actually around five hundred and fifty hair samples collected right now. So again. Back in the twenty seventeen, I only had a hundred and thirty five samples and managed to identify twenty bears out of that with half of us intent of failing. So I think with this larger set of over five hundred, I will not be surprised if we are able to identify upwards of fifty, sixty bears or even more. Now, there's a bit of an assumption by a lot of people that bears that are going into the site to sit there all, all season and just eat garbage and never leave. That's actually not quite true based on some data we have from an older prisoner calling project back in the mid two thousands. There was a couple bears called during that project that actually did come to the Anubik landfill, but they didn't stay there. They came in for a bit, probably get some garbage filled their bellies. And then they actually left and went to another one that more to osculate. Someone that needs to satellate and then over there for the winter. And then that one actually came back following the season. And the other one was kind of starting to be this way back down as well at the time of the project and this. Um the other thing that's not mentioned on here was I was a bit surprised by the amount of evidence of people accessing the site. Uh we had a lot of pictures of people in there in trucks, in the clouds. Uh at midnight, at four o'clock in the morning, at all hours of the day, night. They didn't form the town at the time that we found this stuff. Especially with the trucks, because some of them were driving around the perimeter. We could see some pictures where the trucks were actually right in the landfill. Especially with the trucks, because some of them were driving around the perimeter, we could see some pictures where the trucks were actually right in the landfill at like four o'clock in the morning. The only thing I probably do in there is looking at bears, we also had people on quads with rifles strapped around their desks, so. Um again, whether they're transiting through to go somewhere else or they're just going in there to look at bears that I've done, because I think they're gonna need it. I don't know, but it was a bit of an issue, we informed the town and since put some posts on the side of the gate to prevent at least the trucks from driving around the side of the gate. Access and eventually when the fence is up, hopefully again restrict access by unobvious person after hours, so. But the funniest one I saw was someone obviously moving camera because they drove by, they covered their face with their hand. There was a lot of people. Um so this is just a quick overview of the all the areas the cameras are, as well as the barbed wires, the different colors just represent different things. And so we did have a lot of cameras out around the perimeter of the site, so and it kind of shows why how we got so many pictures. Uh we still, I'd say more than we were anticipating, but um we got pretty good results and I think once the fence is fully installed. We will look, work with the town and find some strategic positions to place cameras along the fence for next spring. So that can capture the reaction of bears when we first encounter the electric wire fence, so. So here's the fun, pretty part of the presentation, it's just a bunch of pictures that we've managed to receive, they kind of show you some of the stuff we are seeing. So you can see there's obviously some game trails that develop, there's bears that encountered the barbed wire, you can see them top right. Exhibit some curiosity sometimes. Again, bottom right, you see a wolf there with a bear as well and uh standing up, so you can go to the next one, a few slides of. Pictures, because they're always interesting to see. Uh you can see the little baby cub, there's obviously females with little cubs that are raising their their families in there. You can see it in the tracks every time you go there, you can see all kinds of tracks all over, including those cub tracks and the wolf tracks. One's giving us a nice little profile shot.
I was gonna say, that needs to be a T-shirt.
And again, it's a bit more wildlife, a couple more different wolves, uh some of the bears coming in. Go to the next one. This one will demonstrate a bit more of like how the hair snags are actually working. So in this case, we kind of have a series of photos where the bear dropped the barbed wire, sometimes they look at it a little bit, but then make the decision to just. You know, climb over on it, or drop it, and then as it rubs along, it will pull some hair of the belly. If we get eleven, ten or three hairs, roots in them, we can get a DNA identification of that bear from that. So usually you would go out in some of these streams and they would have five or six or several uh snags of hair, so you gotta try to make sure you're not. Sometimes maybe the same bear, you can do different snags, but we try to distinguish as best we can based on which one you think are from different pairs. And maybe there'll be some wolf ones that showed up as well, this is. So this is just again, one frame we found, so it was really interesting as a lot of these cameras would be triggered by the two bears that are closest to the camera. Because they only have a certain reach for the motion trigger, but what we found is there was often a lot of really interesting things happening in the background. Like other bears that wouldn't have actually triggered the camera. Um but because there was one that did, and it's the other thing, we got pictures of bears like standing up wrestling each other and stuff like that. And again, only the first two that are closest would have triggered, but then you see all these other bears in the background as well accessing the site at the same time. And these are all timestamped, you see this one at five thirty in the morning. So uh Daniel gave a bit of update on this, so the perimeter room was constructed last fall and finished off some finishing work this summer, fix it up and more drivable. Not with a big mudbar. Defense posts were cemented through the summer and then the chain link installation began at the start of September. Uh we were a little bit surprised by that because we've been recommending that to start later, uh as late as possible because of the amount of bears in there and the level of bear activity. And as expected, once the chain link started to go up, immediately the bears could be seeing, you know, see evidence of them sort of testing the fence. Because they've now encountered a new restriction to their access. You can see areas where they've kind of gone up and scratched down the fence that where they pushed and, you know, pushed the bulges out of it, trying to push their head through. Um trying to dig under it and see where they had been biting it and they bent all the chain link wire and. So they were definitely um testing it out and there was one point where the fence was actually knocked down, so there was a. Top of the contract, he figured someone came in maybe a little bit too quickly, spooked one of the bears. And they, once they did in that mode, they're just gonna run straight and fast. And one, many more bears ran headlong into the fence and kind of knocked a big section of it down. But to be fair, at that point, the fence was only just packed up along the top, just to kind of string it out if they're not fully installed. So it's not surprising that they're gonna need to knock it down at that point. So um they were also putting the spacer brackets on the posts to keep the electric wire a little later on. So you see some pictures here. So it doesn't show up too well, but in that one on the left, you can see some of the areas where they had little bulges in the fence. And the one on the right, you can see where a bear had chomped on the fence trying to get in. There was uh one spot where a bear had actually reached up to the top and pulled the whole top of the fence down and then climbed over it. Uh this is a picture where the fence got knocked down, so again, they just had the one little wire packed up, the top part of bear ran into it and just knocked down a whole big section of it. Um so you can see the spacer posts there where they're just stringing up the wires in the top right there. So some preliminary data, this again was just a preliminary look at stuff back in July. Um the one on the left just shows you the number of bear detections we're getting per day, so you can kind of see it starting off a little slow. And then we get to the beginning of July ramps up to over, over a hundred detections a day in some cases on all the cameras. Um it drops off there, but simply because we didn't really look at any more data after that, so. It was just the amount of data we had, I would say the number of detections likely stayed pretty high through the summer months. Perhaps the more interesting one, uh and more informative one is the one on the right, which showed the time of day that the bear detections were happening. Um the good news is that when you have a situation with bears there, the best situation you can have is the bears are going there when there's nobody around. And that's what you're seeing on the right is the activity is basically very low to nothing in the daytime when the uh. Landfill is in operation, when there when there's people around. And then about eleven, twelve o'clock at night, you start to see them coming in and sort of between. Uh one AM to seven AM, where you have the highest level of activity. And then once before the landfill starts to open, you see the level of activity and detections drop down right down. So that's the best of the situation we hope for is that when the bears are going in there, they're going in there when it's closed and there shouldn't be anybody in there. Like I can see from the cameras and previous experiences we've had with tourists and other folks, there are definitely people going in there when it's closed after hours. And it creates some potentially dangerous conflict situations that could arise. So after we had kind of seen what was happening, the bears were damaging the fence essentially every day that they could go and do repairs. Um we recommended to the contractor that they open up a few spots to basically allow the bears that were coming in and out. Through the summer, to basically have a place they could go and get in and go busting down the fence every day. Um so they did do that, they went and opened up four or five different spots in some of the corners to try to focus the bears to go to those areas. So they wouldn't break that fence down, some of them still, I mean, were just too lazy to walk. Down to the corner and still try to dig under or something, but it did definitely prevent a lot more of that damage. Uh construction was then paused um back in mid September until late October, which was kind of in line with our original. Uh directive to again allow as many bears as possible to go off and prepare to get into their winter dens. And we've already definitely been seeing the level of activity on the cameras uh dropping, so the number of bears, let's say that are going in now is definitely lower now than it was earlier, so. Now's the time to go in and kind of do that full enclosure. And I think the contractor's, I mean, they're starting to do some work tomorrow because the contractor, a while, at least we had a couple. Barbed wire strung across those openings because that's where all the pairs were gonna go through. We even installed a few cameras that would shoot video in those areas, but unfortunately, I won't be able to show you a little video tonight. Um and so they're gonna go and remove those barbed wire sections um tomorrow. And then the contractor, I think, was coming in Saturday, twenty fifth is what they originally said, to come in and closing the fence and string up all the wiring. They said it would take ten days to two weeks to do all that work, so the fence should be fully active around November seventh to tenth. At that point, but hopefully by then, there shouldn't be much of any bear activity, so it'll lie down quite a bit. And then it'll be largely the spring time where we'll start to see what's gonna happen. So Daniel mentioned there's some gravel that have to do along the bottom, and they had some old fencing up there. They're gonna actually take that old fencing and place it, string it to the bottom and then put the gravel on top, which will hopefully help prevent in some spots at least bears from trying to dig under the fence. So, uh once, once they come in the spring without bears, and if there's any new spots identified, we're gonna maybe. And we had a couple other pictures show up, so if any of you guys are missing golf balls, blame the ravens. One of the wolves that we had coming in at one point, uh next slide, would have been a little video. Uh we had a video. There was this little video we set up, um those were set up late in the season, again, once we had those concentrated areas and the new bears going in and out. The video had four bears in it, it was only a ten second video, but we realized that maybe it's short. So we actually ended up those videos to thirty seconds at a time. Uh but it was interesting, you could see the four bills milling around and just when the video stopped, looked like one bear was in the lung, yet another one close to it, so. Now we realize it might be a little bit longer time, so we haven't, I haven't looked at a lot of those videos, I just asked our lab tech to send me some stuff for this present vacation. So that's it, as far as landfill monitoring so far, then next spring is gonna be the telltale sign uh of finding out what's gonna happen. Um as I mentioned before in some council meetings, other communities that have done this kind of thing before have a mixed bag of situations. The following springs, some communities have no issues, the bears disappear and never come into the community. Uh some communities do have some problems, but they kind of go away after a year or two. Some communities do end up having ongoing problems, but those are ones that typically don't do a good job of attracting management. As I mentioned before, the town of Newark has a really good thing going for it, which is it has bear food bins throughout the whole town. If the bears come in and they don't get access to food, they will lose interest fairly quickly. Because they do not want to be in a high risk situation without any reward for that behavior. So things like brushing the 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 trees back from the road, as soon as the bears come out of the trees, they get very nervous. So by making the entry out of the trees, setting, you know, twenty or thirty feet back from the road, rather than right at their edge of the road that it used to be. Um even the people all over the quarter, once that, even just that brushing that done, they love the bear activity, would notice it in that. Because they're much more hesitant to come out of the trees onto the roads because they were exposed regularly. So we do have a wildlife emergency line, so we're doing a big effort to promote that in the spring, it's called the Bear Phone. It's monitored twenty four seven to uh May through October during the bear season, if anyone has any. Wildlife emergency issues, they're highly encouraged to phone that line and an officer will respond at any time of the day or night through the bear season. Don't post it on Facebook, call the number. And we'll work with the town and some of our other partners to again, get a lot more messaging ready and ramping that up a few months before bear season starts. Make sure residents are ready for what could happen, that they're vigilant, that they're aware of the wildlife emergency line. And there's even been interest, I think, from the hospital to have uh some bear safety training for some of their staff who walk and work. Because that's another area that's high level of bear activity, but as soon as you bear just transiting through to try to get to the landfill. Um but there's definitely risky encounters because they're also right now.
Great, thanks Stephen for the, sir, I agree, that gave you some interesting pictures. And good to know some of that passion on information that's uh happening at the, at the landfill, the information that you guys have been able to collect. Any questions, comments for Stephen? No, we're good, thanks very much. Uh one last call for any other um information items that we didn't get to. Maybe having a, maybe happening at the schools? Schools are starting their reports? Oh, okay.
Um mostly we get to start crowdfunding before.
Okay, that would be good. All right, and survey at other council meetings if there are items. That are happening at the schools or something you think council would want to, you know, bring those and um. You can give us some time on the line to let us know about them, that's great. That's everything I've got, Cindy, we're good, nothing else? Motion to adjourn, moved by Council McDowell, thanks everyone, thanks for coming out.